Testing, testing. Yes, can you hear me? All right. All right. Well, good evening. Good evening to everyone. I'd like to call the, uh... Winnebago, uh...town council, uh...budget workshop number two, uh...back... back in the order. Isn't that correct? Uh...tonight, invocation will be given by, uh...Dr. Brandon Harrell, on prompt two. Are you ready?
Test, test.
You're in a presser. He's Canadian. Amen. Thank you. Um...next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. If you would stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, I'd like to welcome everyone. My name is Mayor Ricky Hines. Uh...and next, we will have, um...a roll call. But tonight, we're trying to, um...finish up our undrafted. But, right?
Well...
Not finish up, but...
Make some progress on our undrafted budget, yes.
Yeah, try to get to, yeah. But, um...the roll call will be coming from, uh...manager, Ms. Terry Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start with Councilwoman Hawkins.
Present.
Councilman Moy.
Present.
Mayor Hines.
Present.
Mayor Purtim Harrell.
Present.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Present.
And Councilwoman Smith.
Present.
Mayor and Council all are present and accounted for.
Thank you. Uh...next up is, uh...the approval of the agenda for tonight. I have a motion on the floor, uh...for the approval of the agenda. Councilman Johnny Moore, uh...seconded by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, uh...motion carried. We're gonna take a thirty-minute recess, uh...and we'll be right back.
I'd like to welcome everybody back to the budget meeting. Next up, we're going to have the town manager, Wood Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I hope you all feel good and full from our dinner. Wanted to go over some information you have at your seats. This is, first of all, you have a notification of collection changes. This is a notice that we'll be sending out to the public based off your votes with respect to construction debris and other items and those changes we've made in those schedules. I just wanted you all to have a hard copy of what would be going out to all the citizens. You also have an updated budget message. There are really no changes other than Donald went in and changed the mistakes that I referenced Tuesday evening. The numbers are all, have not been adjusted yet, but you do have the update that just changed those slight mistakes on page two. And you also have one more sheet that shows the comparison for tax rates. And we have added, it looks like this, and we've added the revenue neutrals for those entities that we've compared ours to. So you would have their proposed rate, their current year rate, their proposed rate, and basically what their revenue neutral rates would be. So you try to get a sense of what these places are doing. Okay, so due to the fact that in the day since we last met, I've talked to several of you about tax rate, answered some questions, asked some questions, and I wanted to start off by just trying to determine if everybody was comfortable with the 40 cents. I know that's what was voted on, but the reason you don't see any changes in the budget documents is because I wanted to be absolutely positively sure there were no more discussion, there's no more discussion to be had, no more questions, and everybody was good with where
Anybody have any questions or do want to stay at 40 cents? That is, that is it. Yes. I think we're looking at the new comparable rates, tax rates that she just sent out. There's proposed rates for Aiden now is still at point, what, 54, Greenville at point 39, 27, Falvo is at point 46, and we're, what we looked at the other night at point 40, and Pitt County is at point 5665. My take on it, I think it's just my take. I think we should be at least at 45. That's my take, proposed. We should at least be at 45. With Falvo being at 46, we still be, um, the other municipalities, we still within, and I think we're kind of, if we go at 45, how much would that affect?
Just would call attention to council, you all know this, but if I could say, we provide these numbers because we're always asked to provide these numbers. Folks want to know what the other places are doing, and we often ask the other places what they're doing. However, everybody, all of these entities are in vastly different situations. So though you can look at the rate and compare how our rate looks compared to these other jurisdictions, it's hard to compare the jurisdictions is basically what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, because our growth is different from Falvo's growth, our growth is different from Aiden's, you know, and you can't really look at our ranking net from that standpoint because we're growing by leaps and bounds. It's not going to completely fill in the whole.
Closes it slightly.
So I have a question in terms of when we say Greenville's rate and we say Pitt County's rate, can we clarify Greenville, we talking citywide and Pitt County outside?
Yes, it's throughout Pitt County. Yes. Yes, yes.
If you live in Greenville, you pay both.
Okay. I could go one step further. I'm sorry. I don't mean to jump in. These numbers will be helpful. So this is across all funds. Departments went ahead and started making cuts because they were going to have to make them anyway, even if you stayed the same tax rate, right? So based on the cuts that have been made to date, the deficit across all funds, I don't have it broken down, but is now $2,742,240, 2742240. That's across all funds, and needless to say, I thank staff because they went back and worked hard to prioritize their asks. And then I do believe we included some debt proceeds that you'll see so that we could purchase some equipment, finance that equipment. There will be some positions retained, but not all positions, and we'll be able to fund some of these requests that everybody has. But the picture is brighter.
Any more discussion?
I do have a question. So, and I'm, Terry, I wasn't fast enough to write it down. So if I'm correct, originally the draft was out of balance across all funds by $5,120, and then it went up to $5,387,884.
That's been in the work that's been done since we last met, and then departments have gone in and cut. And so we've been able to, across all funds, reduce the deficit to $2,742,240, 2742240. That's still a big deficit, but it's a heck of a lot better than 5.3 million.
Mm-hmm, and with those cuts, was that, did that, was left alone, the cost of living increase merit and all that?
Yes.
Because that's what I would request, make sure that that stays in place, benefits and all, so none of that was touched.
That was not adjusted. It was predominantly capital and personnel. And some debt, some debt proceed funding, and there are, in the electric fund, you will see a usage of retained earnings. That department with the old tar widening, utility relocation that's going to have to take place with a lot of the work that they're doing in their respective subdivisions, there's a lot happening at one time. It is in all departments, but... It is in all departments, but electrics got a lot to handle in a relatively short period of time. So, we felt like some retained earnings usage was needed to, in order, Anthony, jump in or Ron?
So for the electric fund, we have seen a stabilization in the natural gas prices. So one of the things that we did, we had budgeted up to five million dollars for purchase for resale. And based on our current status, we're probably going to be over, have a million dollars left over from this year, based on what we budgeted. So the recommendation for the fund balance use is basically essentially be that one million dollars that will be left over from this year, that was saved because natural gas prices leveled out, we'll reapply that to next year's budget. So that's the funding, there were cuts, but the majority of the electric fund came from the use of retained earnings and cuts.
I do have a comment. While we're talking about the rates, and it is difficult in one way or the other, you want to save money for our citizens, our residents, because they are going to be getting increases in their utilities. But I do want to say that in order to provide the services for the people of Winterville, there needs to be some adjustments. With that being said, I know we spoke in terms of the non-town agencies. I'd like for the town council to keep in mind, and also, I don't know if we can try to decipher, when we are providing all of these monies to non-agency, that is adding to the deficit ultimately. And I know we talked about it, but we're here, and this is an extension of that discussion. I just want to reiterate, when the budget comes around again, just to keep that in mind, because that is adding to the deficit. Second, I wanted to ask about if, for example, Mayor Hines proposed forty-five, for forty-five, what would be that revenue neutral rate for that? Or was that added in to make it six hundred plus thousands?
So the six hundred and thirty-five thousand was in addition to the point four-zero rate, that was already the baseline. That's what the baseline was set at in the last meeting to bring back, you know, when we started working on the budget. So that six thirty-five is simply between the forty cent to the forty-five. So from the revenue, from the revenue neutral rate, it's one point two.
So from the forty to the forty-five? Then you explain what that six hundred?
Well, it's gonna, yes, it's, oh, now this is in general, this is in general fund, keep in mind. So the water, sewer, stormwater, and electric, those respective budgets take care, they have their separate revenue streams, and they are presented in and of themselves separately. So when we're talking about the actual tax rate adjustment, that is going to affect the general fund departments. And that is listed in your budget message, but they're all the departments except for electric, water, sewer, and stormwater. Parks and Rec is considered its own fund, but it's predominantly funded by general fund revenues, and it's otherwise considered a general fund department. That make sense?
You need to ask them. This is the time to ask.
Talking about funding the multipurpose facility. Currently, and I'm glad you mentioned it, because I want to circle back to that discussion with respect to what would be included in the budget. So the multipurpose facility, we have purchased the land. We also have funded in this current twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, monies for the two plans that Diane and her staff will be bringing forward, working with the consultants, reaching out to the community and council, and getting that all involved, so we, everybody involved, so we can start making the plan for what folks would like to see, et cetera. Once that's done, then the design, if you will, will go into effect. And as the design is going into effect, we'll have to figure out, first of all, how much it's going to cost, and then how to fund it. Currently, there are no funds set aside for the multipurpose facility. We do know that the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant, and you'll hear us use the acronym PARTIF, is a single, large single source, up to five hundred thousand, that we have applied for previously when we expanded Winterville Recreation Park, that's a dollar-for-dollar match. But we're looking and hopefully going to get a positive result in that particular grant fund and any others that may be available. You all have directed us to create a capital reserve fund and start putting money in that. Mr. Moy asked me to come back with a number. Won't see a number, because I haven't adjusted any of the sheets yet, but based off of the tax discussion, I had in my mind somewhere in the range of ten to twenty-five thousand dollars as a placeholder. Because again, we still have a deficit, even if we raise it to forty-five cents. Anthony, am I forgetting anything? Diane, anything?
I'm not aware of anything else I had.
No. Yes. Any monies that we have to borrow, we get grants for that money, and anything we build on top of that, it will be set aside for the purposes of the building.
At a future date, once it's-
If I may speak to that, and only I can give just shy fifteen years' experience into, it has always been a priority of the councils that have been in place. We just haven't been in the position, because we didn't have any land, first and foremost, or were we in the position to move forward with that until recently. So I think it's been the recent councils that really directed us, and again, feel free to jump in, folks that have been around a long time, but start formulating specifically what that looks like, have a department that could start to formulate, I mean, again, they only have five full-time folks, but at the same time, trying to plan for and determine what would, a multipurpose facility would look like, has a lot to it, so I think if you could ever say the right time, has been more recently than the conversations that have gone on, they've not really been formalized previously.
And if I could just add, historically, there were attempts at other facilities, so like the zone at the, over Sarah Law, we almost purchased that, it fell through at the last minute. So there have been attempts, and it's like we go down a path, and it just didn't come to fruition. And, you know, it was stymied for a little while, and sit there, and then kind of come back up, and then another roadblock, and until, but it seems like more recently, the dominoes are starting to fall in place.
Now, just for clarification, I said forty-five. Anybody else got a number that they put out? You can put that number out, I just said forty-five for myself. Y'all have a number, you can put out fifty-five. I'm just telling you, I just put out forty-five, you know? Cheap, but, you know, just for me, you know?
Mayor, if I could go back to Ms. Councilwoman Hawkins's question, and Anthony, thank you for bringing that up, because it's my understanding, once since I've been here, but there were two potential opportunities at the zone in Sarah Law, where the town looked at it. The second one, we were a lot more serious and ready to do something, so I'm glad you brought that up, because I basically forgot. Thank you.
Have a, have a motion on the floor by Dr. Harrell, Councilwoman Dr. Harrell, seconded by Councilwoman Veronica Robinson, to move the rate from forty cents to forty-five cents per-
Yes.
Per one hundred. Any discussion? If none, please vote by raising your right hand. One, two. Got three? All opposed? Three, two, motion carried. Raise the rate to forty-five.
And Mayor, if I may, I would like to, I realize that our town is in dire need.
Yes ma'am.
But this is not a new place that we are. This has been in the works for quite some time. And taxes were not increased at any point, nor fees or anything. And this board has had to make some difficult decisions. I'm completely, I realize what our town needs, but we are doing a lot all at one time, and I'm a little concerned about that. I mean, I would have maybe considered forty-two, or is it something a little bit more in-between? I mean, right now, it's ten cent to the town favor. I mean, what if the revales had not come in so high? And we didn't have this opportunity to have a decrease, but really get a ten-cent increase? How was the budget balanced last year and the year before? I know that's a difficult thing, and it's the board's pleasure, but past boards have not made that move, and although we do need to make moves in that direction, somewhat incremental would have been more preferable to me for constituents, a little at a time, maybe, maybe. That's, that's just what I, that's where I'm at. I'm not trying to be difficult in any means, and my first concern is that current staff is taken care of, COLA is taken care of, merit pay is taken care of, benefits are taken care of. But if they, if as a board and as a staff had to make the cuts they did for the past several years, because again, our current economic situation, it did not just happen. But the hard decisions had not been made prior, and I just, I worry that we're doing a whole lot for, at one time-
I agree.
-for our constituents. Again, I know it has to happen eventually, but you know, it might have been that we could have done that for four years at forty, or even forty-two, and then maybe look at the dreaded tax increase at some time, rather than doing everything at once, and that's, that's just why, that I just want to explain why I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm not trying to challenge staff in any way, they're greatly appreciated, they all know that. I just, I want us to be cautious, and I want us to be very frugal in what we do, because we are putting a lot on constituents.
Thank you.
I would like to add to, thank the staff who recommended of that recommendation. And then this board will vote on- And now we are voting upon it again on the third time, to raise it back up.
I was just wanting to say, you didn't vote on it the first time, you directed staff to draft the budget based off forty cents. So there's only been two votes on the tax rate, but the information we had at the time, we had not received the last valuation numbers from Pitt County when we recommended the forty. So I only say that- What I'm, what I'm saying is, you said this is the third time, it's only the second. You all directed us, but not, you directed us to draft the budget based on forty. Not necessarily the same thing as setting the tax rate at forty. I just wanted to, just- Telling us to draft the budget using a forty-cent tax rate is not the same thing as setting the forty-six cent tax rate.
And that was recommended by whom?
Council voted on that Tuesday night.
What I'm saying, it was recommended by our staff, is that correct?
It is correct, based on the num, and that's what I'm answering, based on the numbers that we had at the time, which did not include the final valuation numbers from Pitt County. Which we knew we were going to receive, and we did report that to council.
And the reason why I'm so angry about this, because I, I was, I was basing my decision and my outlook on the information that was provided to me from the staff, you know? And, and to see what the other municipalities were doing also, you know, even Greenville, look what they do, you know? And, go ahead.
I understand what you're saying, but that's a totally different demographic.
But most of the time, we're asked, we'll say what is, if the rest of the surrounding municipalities are doing. Okay, but anyway, make a long story short, I, I applaud the information that was asked and that was given to you in the direction to lower the rate from the point four-seven. Now, I understand also that the deficit, that we're speaking of the five-point-seven-five million, is, is things that we desire to have, some, and then some future things that we'd like to do. Is that correct?
I would not use the term desire, I would use the term absolutely need.
Absolutely, of, of the things that we need to do.
And these are things that have been needed.
Yes, things that have been needed.
Correct.
Yes, and I like to say to Councilwoman Smith, I totally agree with you, that, you know, those things that we're speaking of, you know, you just don't want to do things too fast.
We, we don't-
I'm just saying as a void melon and to represent our citizens. And I totally agree with you one hundred percent. And I totally agree with you one hundred percent. And, and I think that we have a better understanding on this tax rate. Now, you know. You, you will, you will see it a little bit clearer. When that bill comes, you will understand it better. You will see the difference between a point four oh compared to a point four seven when it comes.
If I may, just could have done some calculations and we had talked about this at the last meeting, about the two hundred, the average house being a wonderful about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so with that, I'm seeing that it will be twenty dollars and eighty-four cents per month.
Per month. And how much is that per year?
Well, it'd be two hundred and forty dollars.
Two hundred and forty dollars. And then.
Four to four, that's four to forty-five cent rate.
That's for your town tax, right?
Correct.
Does not include county tax. But I'm just saying that, look, I'm saying, and I'm not boasting, you know, a lot of ones, ones in your problem don't have, I mean, it will affect us to a degree, but not the ones that own the bills on that income.
None of that is fault, none of that falls short on staff when we're bringing these numbers forward. I, I just, I understand what you're saying and you're the one that votes, but we're the one that has to make the recommendation. We're the ones that have to live with, as you do. These are the folks that go out and do the work. And I know the toll it's taking on your current staff. So we don't make the recommendations lightly, but I'm just trying to tell, and I've been trying to tell, we've been trying to tell council for a long time, that it was going to come to a head and that's where we are. And you're right, Councilwoman Smith, it didn't just happen, but we're at a critical time.
Well, and, and let me say, and Councilwoman Moore.
You don't understand why you recommend.
That number, I, yeah, it was. It was, it was brought to stop the bleeding from the deficit from the prior year. As you may recall from meeting the other night, we talked about how we had borrowed six hundred thousand dollars from the, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the electric fund. And we had used six hundred thousand dollars of fund balance for operating expense, not for capital purchases, for operating expense. And then we borrowed five hundred and ten thousand dollars to purchase equipment. So you were, you know, looking at one point seven million dollars in, in the hole to balance the budget last year. Now, everybody, conversation we were hearing, wanted to cut that transfer back from the electric fund to make it more self-sufficient. You know, because the number was so high, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars transfer from the electric fund was, you know, it was, it was the goal to cut that back. And so the recommendation was to simply make you hold from the deficit of just money that we borrowed the prior year. That wasn't advancing any other, you know, changes in cost of consumer price index. That wasn't advancing adding employees. That wasn't advancing equipment, capital purchases. That wasn't making any advancement. That was brought to you so we could make the general fund whole. So the number you have before you now is including the recommendations above and beyond that.
I am finished, Mayor.
All right. Yeah. But, you know, I understand where you're coming from and we all on. Yeah. Oh, okay. I was, I was saying, I understand where you're coming from. We all on the budget. I think everybody household is pretty much on a budget. I think we all, but as we all know, inflation is driving this train for everybody out in the United States, it's inflation. And we got to do something to help ourselves because if not, we can't keep digging a hole. I say a well to no end. And we got to make these tough decisions. That's what I said the first night coming in. We got to make tough decisions. These decisions are not easy. And you said that, Lucy. You know, these are not easy decisions. I said forty-five myself, but then I also said I could see fifty-five. And therefore, you could have said, I mean, either any of them, you could have said anything in between or wherever. I just said forty-five. If you wanted forty-two, if you wanted forty, you could have said it. But that's what I'm saying, you know. But you asking earlier, well, Monday, you asked a question about you needed something in the budget for multi-purpose. You call that? I'm, I'm just asking, do you recall that?
I'm speaking on.
I'm, I'm speaking on it. I'm, I'm speaking, I'm speaking on that.
Don't sit there, I'm just saying, just speak openly.
I'm speaking openly. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking openly. You said you wanted something from the budget for the multi-purpose. Miss Councilwoman Harrell asked the same thing. Correct? Right? You said, you like to see us plan for something in the, right? I'm sorry, Councilwoman. Overall, right, but in order for us to plan for that, we got to, you know, look at it that way. You know, you got to look at how we're going to cover up this hole to add something somewhere else. And that's what I was, but good sense. And I, I'm with you as far as non-agency taking away from work, you know, from our budget. I mean, you know, I'm probably going to get a lot of flack for it, but that's what I was voted in. Make tough decisions, you know. And to make sure this town runs the way it's supposed to run. You know, as I said before, you don't want LGC running the town. You don't want, you don't want people that can't manage your town. And we got a great staff that manage our town, you know, and they take pride in what they do. But as we grow, we got to think about the future, as she said earlier. We got to think about the future. We got to think about adding people. We talking about the multi, I'm, I'm still hyping on multi-purpose because that's a big item that's going to be coming down the road. And that means that's going to require staff. And, you know, where are they going to come from? How, how are we going to pay for them? Are we going to come back and we're going to tell the citizens, well, we got this nice big building, but we have nobody to staff it? And we want these things, but we got to realize, we got to pay for these things. I want fancy wheels on my car, but I know I got to pay for them. I'm just trying to, you know, get that out. So, yeah, I mean, you know. We can't, we're not going to please everybody. We're not going to make everybody happy. But we got a town to run at the end of the day, you know. And if we sitting here, we got to make that decision to say, okay, do we want it or do we want to just stay right here at the town? I'm putting that, we taking it all out. We ain't putting nothing back in. Your checking account, you take your money out of your checking account and don't put nothing back in, you're going to go there and you're going to have a zero balance. Eventually, you're going to have a zero balance. And, and everybody around here has got a household. You keep taking money out of your checking account, you ain't going to have nothing.
Mayor, if I could say something on behalf of staff. We understand the decision's hard. I simply wanted to know where council stood on the issue. It bothers me, if it's being stated, that counts, that staff brought and recommended a forty cent tax rate, which we did, with the information that we had at the time. There's nothing nefarious about what we presented. It was the best information, as Anthony stated, to try to cover a hole we were in. We knew we were getting updated numbers. We reported those additional numbers were coming. So it was in no way, shape or form to put you in one corner and then ask you to turn around and put yourselves in another. It is simply, I think anybody that's worked in budget will tell you, it's a, an ebb and flow, a changing, it, it, it is not until you all vote on it, it is not a done deal. And then even after you vote on it, the first thing we do, and one of the first meetings after budget is approved, is to come back with all the purchase order rollovers for things we couldn't get to this year in order for y'all to amend the budget. So again, it, it is something that is forever changing. And so I just wanted to say, we'll live with what you give us. We're thankful for the discussion. We're thankful for the openness that you all have shown us. I just don't want it to be presented as if we presented something and then basically went back on our word because that's not what happened.
I would like to say that. But I do also thank Harry for giving the information and helping us to understand what the forty cent looks like and what the forty-five cent is. Because, you know, it's not at the current rate of the forty-seven. In years to come, it may go to forty-seven, but right now it's not at that forty cent. I do understand. And so I would just say that I want to begin to think about moving forward, like for future and understanding. When you make decisions that are tough like this, it is for, it is for a strategic move for the future and for our family and for generations that come, you know, in China. Because again, if nothing has happened in, in, in years prior, then we are here and we're faced with this, this, and so I'm just, again, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, you know, we want to, we're not. But that's just the situation of that we're facing, things need to be done right here all together because, you know, here and prior, there was an. You know, to the point of, because I read that that came, you know, a month ago, pretty much, uh, we have to look at things like that. We have to look at things like that. And so hopefully, you know, the family, you know. Are we in a way that they're. We feel it, we all feel it now.
Mayor, if I may, and then I would like to move on, I'm sure as everybody would. And again, I, I go back to, I apologize, not that I was here to do anything with, but for staff. You know, the things that we're talking about this year, they could have been done last year, but there was no increase in anything that I'm aware of. Correct me if I'm wrong. And staff was challenged with balancing that budget at that current tax rate with no increase in services and no decrease in services. And so, again, I wish that it had been more incremental. My concern is that it's, it's a lot all at one time, which was why I preferred a little bit lower, maybe a median tax rate. But it's done now. But we're talking about doing hard things, but the hard things hadn't been done in previous years either. And now constituents are being hit at once. And that was just my concern.
Yes.
It's a decrease.
Correct. That's correct. Right. It is still a decrease technically. That's correct. Your bill's still going to be higher, right and smaller. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. And, and yes, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Robertson. It is a decrease, but when we had the four point forty cent in our mind and then going back and forth, it's ultimately productive struggle. And the productive struggle are for the citizens as well as the staff. And me coming in new, I've had to learn a lot in a short amount of time, which, you know, which is a blessing to me. But what I have seen over the past few months with regards to the staff and their knowledge and their dedication, and what we see and what I convey back and forth with the people of Winterville, the, the staff are, I'm the conduit in between and the staff are doing what they can. Now, make no mistake, if I saw that the staff was not knowledgeable or dedicated, I would not hesitate to speak on behalf of the people of Winterville. And the forty-five, I don't want to do it because I'm a citizen and I have to pay an increase. But if the overall benefit will help, then, then, then we will all feel the brunt of it. But in the, in the long run, it will help. And as Dr. Harrell just said, our children and our children's children, we have got to get out of the hole. Again, the staff is serving the people with dedication. And if I did not see that, I would say something without a doubt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Can we move on to, we had three, um, non-town agencies that, that we didn't talk about. We had three non-agencies that we, that we didn't talk about, um, Monday night. We supposed to gather some information. I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to do my level best to try to cover what I think, and Dawn helped me capture what information I think we were supposed to bring back to council. So I'd like to first talk about the Boys and Girls Club request. You all have at your seats a handout. Councilwoman Hawkins, I think you may have requested the funding history for Boys and Girls Club, and it looks like this. And you'll see, we went back to twenty-one, twenty-two, but we provided what was requested in those budget years and then what was approved. So the request has, it started out at ten thousand dollars a year. We have always funded five, but then in twenty, last year or the current year, twenty-three, twenty-four, they requested twenty thousand. We funded five and they've requested twenty again. I did send, I did reach out. Their application again references the number of Winterville. Let me flip over to it.
Page four. You talking about how many? Number of people they serve in the town.
Yeah, thank you.
Page four.
That the, the Winterville Club serves one hundred and twenty-two. And so I think that covers, did I miss anything with what we were looking for for the Boys and Girls Club?
She wanted, I ain't putting words in your mouth, Councilwoman Hawkins, but I think you wanted to know what the other sixty percent or whatever, who, who was, I think that's what you were asking. If I'm not correct, correct me, but wasn't that kind of what you was asking?
Yes.
The other sixty percent, who was taking care of the other sixty percent? How were they contributing to what they was asking us for twenty thousand? What are they asking the other sixty-two?
Where does the money come from, or what are they asking other municipalities for? Okay, I've reached out.
That is correct. I was just inquiring, what are the other municipalities contributing that they're asking us for twenty thousand and we have a hun, total of one hundred and twenty-two? I know it's well beyond that. So if we have one hundred and twenty-two, closest sixty percent of that is, they, they have to have about seven hundred, six or seven hundred that they're serving. So are they asking the same amount, or is it less? Or just an inquiry.
Right.
Because each time, it was ten thousand, ten thousand, twenty and twenty, that went up an additional ten thousand. So I just want to ensure that we are not funding more than other municipalities.
And for you, and if you look down in the mission statement in twenty, on twenty-one, it says, it's around about five hundred and seventy-five members as of twenty-three. So it could be a little bit more, it may be a little bit less. Some idea of the number of people that they are serving.
Yes, so just, just as a notation, all municipalities don't have the same type of non-town agency funding process. So a lot of the smaller towns, I don't think do such a thing. I can reach out to everybody if you'd like to know, and we can certainly do that. I reached out to them, was not, did not hear back. So I will follow up on that specific information. But I don't know that several of these entities actually ask, that serve beyond Winterville, actually ask other jurisdictions for monies.
That, that was the crux of my inquiry.
Right.
And what is the process and how, like, for example, you know, these different non-agencies, their application process?
Yes.
How do they know about it? You know, because that opens, then that opens the door for others, okay, well, they're getting, and then here come more, I mean, and it's not benefiting us overall. It is helping and to be community, you know, county-wide helping, but if it's not helping Winterville, then it's really not helping to me. So that was just the core of my inquiry.
I think we have, we created our process, there is an application. We do, and historically, it has been the same core group. So we do have two new ones this year, but historically, Pitt County Girl's softball is probably the newest of the core group that's come on board. But we do, we require them to submit a annual report, which you all have in your, in your packets. And Don does a good job of working with them to let them know when we're accepting applications, when the deadlines are, when the deadlines for the reports are. So we do have a process, I just don't think all municipalities have the same process. But if council would like to know that, we'll be more than happy to find out who's funding outside agencies and who is not. I went through the same, the, the report that I gave to council back here in Winterville a long time ago, two thousand and ten, I believe it was. I did the same type of report and study back in the city of Greenville a hundred years ago. So it's something that I know Greenville has done historically, I don't know if they're doing it now, but they grapple with the same thing.
And I think on page eight is a good indication of the funds that the Boys and Girls Club get. If you look on page eight, it says, Bank of America, twenty-five hundred dollars pending. East Carolina Health Foundation, ten thousand dollars. North Carolina Community Foundation, twenty-five hundred dollars. The Perkins Wells West Foundation, fifty thousand dollars. Pitt County ABC Board, nine thousand. And DHS, that's twenty-two thousand, five hundred. So in a, at twenty thousand dollars, what they're asking us is putting us in line with DHS.
Well, again, that's their request.
I'm, I'm, I'm just kidding, it's a request, but, you know, I'm just saying, you don't see, and, and I know every other municipality is different, but it's just like, and I'm gonna say it, people just think that we cash cow over at Winterville. I'm, I'm serious, because we're growing, they think that we got money coming out of the yam. We don't, people. We, we trying to serve all citizens, we don't have money like that. But people just think, because we're booming, we're growing, they think that, okay, we can come over and ask, and, but it's not that way.
Well, there, Councilwoman Hawkins made a good point. There is no limit on, in other words, there's no just grandfather groups, list of groups, it's open to anybody that wants to apply, and there's no limit on their requests. Now, that doesn't mean they'll get it, obviously, what they request, but they can request any amount as long as they can show and complete the application accordingly.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnny Moore, and seconded by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell, to fund the Boys and Girls Club at five thousand dollars. Is any discussion before we move? After none, all vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carried, we grant them five thousand dollars. All right, now, we have.
The Greenville Pitt Education Association. I communicated with several emails going back and forth between Karen Turnage, who I believe is the executive director, and myself. So they do not delineate between students that live in the mailing district of Winterville and Winterville Corporate Limits. She, they're not at liberty to share names and addresses of students, which I understand. So they don't track where these students, in other words, she can't give me how many students got a scholarship. I did ask for eligibility requirements, and are they just seniors that they give? You know, try to give some more specific information as to how these scholarships are awarded. She said she would get me that information, I don't have it as of this evening. Predominantly, I think she referenced D.H. Conley and South Central, obviously, because they're the majority feeder schools. But I did point out that we have other high schools where students attend from Winterville. But other than that, I'm not sure they're gonna be able to be much more specific to try to ascertain how many of these students are kids that live in the corporate limits. And Councilwoman Hawkins, I'm not sure if I missed anything there.
From my understanding, they give five hundred dollar scholarships to four students. Correct, is it, am I?
I think that is what their application states currently, yes. Though I'm assuming they're requesting two thousand dollars, that that would be an additional for students. But I also am trying to figure that out as well. So I feel, I'm sorry, because I don't have any more information. She's supposed to get me additional information, I just don't have any more for tonight's discussion.
Well, I would like to see, I would like to see the board just not fund any new additional funding for this year, because we just sit, I just sat here and said, you know, keep giving, giving, and then we asking our citizens to give more. So I, that's just my suggestion, and that we don't fund any more new entity, agency. That's my suggestion.
I would make the motion that we do not fund new entities, new requests this year.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Smill, and seconded by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell, not to fund any new requests this year. Any discussion?
There has been one request, I think that comes from the community garden. I think that that is a program that is beginning to grow in the community. And, and what I have seen, that they welcome any citizens from the town. Girls, you can go out and, and visit. What I understand, and I think they give some support, some faith.
Well, I was gonna follow up on your comments to say that I did reach out to Mr. Jones. I know he works full-time and is busy, covering the questions that we talked about, and that was the drainage issue, and if that's been resolved, how much of their request was allocated for drainage? And would their request be amended accordingly? Who is served by the community garden? And I know that their application says folks from Winterville, but I think we talked about kind of how that, how that takes place, and then what is the relationship with ECU Health and Canita Life Farm? So I do have those questions out there, and waiting information back. No, sir, not yet.
Could we add to that motion until we get a, get information hopefully by, are we still gonna meet next week?
Yes, sir, my hope is to bring a balanced budget back and just to quickly go over the balance pieces.
Now, you had to ask, the motion was made by, no, I'm trying to tell you how you got to do it. Lisa made the motion, so you have to talk to Lisa to amend her motion, not the board. You have to talk to Lisa, ask her, will she amend her motion? And then it'll come to Ms. Dr. Harrell, and she agrees, and she's seconding it. That's the process.
Yes, that's a conclusion. So Councilwoman Moy, I understand your, your, your concerns, but in light of the increases that we have just discussed with our constituents, I'm hesitant to bring on any new funding. We've also talked about perhaps not funding any now, in the future, non-town agencies. And so with those discussions in mind, I, I would like to send it to a vote.
All right. So if there's no other discussions, do we vote by raising your right hand? Four? All oppose? Four, one, vote to say not fund the other two.
Since there is information pending, once I get it, I'll still forward it to everybody, just so you have the information. Mayor Don has something he'd like to say.
I've gotten credit or blame for putting these together. If it, after we get the budget process finished, I think then would be a time that we look at our system and see where we want to head forward, more information we want to get from them or what. And I'd be glad to build that into how you want to go forward for next year.
I would like to see it put on the agenda. I know that we meet, uh, to adopt the budget in June.
At your regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting, in July, usually we skip.
Yes, ma'am.
I like to see it put on the August agenda.
Okay.
I like to see it, as I discuss, as I said yesterday, if we're not gonna fund these non-town agencies, we need to let them know early.
I agree.
So that, I would like to see it put on our agenda for August.
The, the process of non-town agency funding in August.
Yes.
Okay, folks, I think that takes care of that. We will get the approved request and the status of everything else updated and get your sheets updated.
So.
One other thing, I would like the library moved from this category.
Okay.
Because that's an agreement that the town has with Shepherd. So in essence, to me, it's almost like it's a town function.
I call it a quasi-governmental function, because I agree, I think historically, it was included in this process. But we could certainly still use the application, so they can provide us the information that is helpful in making the decision. But at that ti, yes, we can take it off the actual reporting sheet.
So that, that brings to mind another question that I have, because we had a good discussion about the work that the chamber does, but it is also categorized as a non-town agency, and that would kill the chamber, and it does a lot of good work.
Right.
And so I don't know if there's a way to look at that, so that it's, I don't know, it's something to, like, how do we keep the chamber functioning, something to consider?
It could, but I just caution you, is that really where you want to go with funding a chamber? A commerce, in other words?
That's why I'm asking, I mean, I don't, I hate for it to end, I'd see, you know, we've had a lot of good feedback from it, I think Rebecca Kavanis does a great job, but it is a non-town agency, so if we're gonna do a hundred percent.
Right.
A non-town agency, it would be axed, or do we look at something if it is not a direct part of the town? You see what I'm saying, like, we need to consider that, so we don't kill our chamber, we don't kill our historical society, we don't kill the depot and things like that that are direct town.
Now, what you could do is you could put that funding, this, I'm just spitballing here, that's not a professional term, but you know what I mean?
Exactly what you say.
Uh, we could incorporate what we fund them in the economic development side of things and fund it through that, so.
Is that?
It comes out of the non-town agency umbrella, and it's basically an arm of the economic development. I hadn't talked with Stephen about this, but I assume he wouldn't disagree, because they promote current businesses, but also new businesses and try to bring things to town. So that sounds like that could be, if it's okay with council, a more suited place for that function.
Yes, that would be, thank you.
Absolutely. Agreed, and like I said, they could still provide us with the, the information, you all could get that information and see what's happening every year, and just consider that almost quasi-governmental as well.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Good question. Have, anybody else have anything, do you have anything?
I do, I have one more thing. I would like to ask that council vote tonight on the proposed five percent cost of living across the board for all employees, and the range for merit, which is, I should have off the top of my head, hold on a second, one point two to two point four percent. And if I could get a vote on that, just to solidify that piece of the budget, that would be great.
So moved.
Five percent cost of living adjustment, and the range for merit would be one point two percent to two point four percent. It's included in your budget message, just to be clear.
Could we say so moved? Dr. Drow, I had to get the exact numbers. I'll go back and take my so moved, and I recommend that the council approve the 5% COLA and 1.2% to 2.4% merit for employees.
They have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell, to accept the COLA at 5%, and up to 1.2.
1.2 to 2.4.
Yeah, 1.2 to 2.4.
Merit.
Merit, for the merit. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Moy. Yeah, question, any questions?
We have 90 funded positions. Well, it's a good question, we haven't had it in a few years. If you'll recall, we haven't funded merits, merit in, it's probably been three or four years, time gets by me. So, I don't have an average to give you, but it's based on their performance. So, we'll have a better. Well, you get a certain percentage from meeting standard. So, the majority of employees are going to meet standard. And then you have a handful of employees that exceed standard, and that percentage is slightly higher. So, the majority of employees will receive some type of merit. But I would like to point out the cost of living adjustments, even though the employees benefit from those, it's really for the pay scale, is to keep the pay scale competitive, and the salaries competitive. So, merit is for the actual performance of the employees. So, there are really two different purposes for that. Well, that defeats the purpose of merit. Merit is performance-based pay. And it's important, and I think Angie would agree, to have a system that holds employees accountable for their performance. It's also, it keeps, I don't wanna get in the weeds tonight.
Well, 'cause, 'cause Y could be a slacker, X could be
Correct.
Doing what he needs to do, and Z just might not show up.
Well, Mr.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm not saying that, you know.
No, 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 I know, but.
I'm just saying that, that, that if we're gonna use, I'm just asking some specific, what is the percentage? If all of the employees can receive a merit.
No, not all employees can.
Saying that it's based on their performance.
Correct.
And then you said that the COLA is based on trying to keep us
Correct.
With the market.
Correct.
But the merit basically is towards the employees themselves.
Correct.
So, I'm saying that we have employees, I have said this in the past, we have employees slacking, not doing a job, we don't need them.
Well, that's what we work on.
That's the way I look at it, I mean, I'm just saying.
And we don't usually keep them.
Yes, we shouldn't keep them. But if, if we keep them, we should pay them. And I think they should be paid like everybody else. It's just my thing, I think I had.
You have said that before.
I've done that in the past, and I still say that today. And I understand the method and the reason behind that, you know, and hopefully that you can pull a little bit more from your staff, or somebody might bring something different to the table. But everybody don't like everybody, and I have found out in the past, I don't care what you bring to the table. If you dislike it, you still gonna see something wrong, it's not enough for him to get that merit paid. I'm just saying.
I know, but I would like to, I would like to respond to that. We had a detailed conversation when council reinstitute, or instituted merit, about the system we use, and the documentation that has to go into that. Supervisors don't make the decisions by themselves, no, they do not. We have a human resource director now, and I'm still very involved, the ultimate decision. So, it's not a one-stop shop, so if you don't like XYZ, you don't get the overall say-so. And if you submit me, fails to meet, fails to meet, fails to meet, and you have no specific information, and the employee has a problem with what's happened, then we're gonna have to talk about it. So, I'm not gonna say it's taking, taking 100% of the subjectivity out, but I would say that we have a pretty good system. And the day of pain, employees all the same, and not expecting them to meet their standards and exceed their standards are gone. That doesn't work. People want to be appreciated when they do a good job, and we try to tell folks, thank you, and we do. Lift, put your hand down. And we really, really want to work ways to appreciate our employees and to thank them for the job that they do. And merit's a piece of that. We do our level best to try to make good employees better, that's our jobs. But there's not always gonna be 100% of your workforce that is fabulous. Now, Mr. McGuffin, you have been really, really wanting to say something, what is it? We do, and that's a bonus, a one-time flat rate. Now, those employees, there's a handful that have been here a long time, that get a percentage. But, and that's appreciative, we're appreciative to, to folks for their, for their time here. But merit really speaks to the performance of an employee, and that's where you build your employees, and that's where you really try to work with them, so that they become better. And I don't wanna put Angie on the spot, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but.
Give an example, to represent staff a little bit here. With the recent transition in the, in the letter department, I sat down with every employee in that department, met with them one-on-one, had conversations about what, you know, how they feel about their employment, you know, the pros, the cons, what it takes to do their jobs. Pretty much every one of them, you know, looked at me, and we have a small department, and that's one of the things, we are, in many ways, we still have a, we are, while we're a growing town, we're still a small town. So, when you look at the hierarchy of people wanting to advance their careers, electric, recreation, poller works, there's not a bunch of steps. And, and people want to stay here. But without a merit system, they get stuck. Like, I mean, they get the COLA, but as far as being able to, you know, move up the ladder, so to speak, they're very limited in options. Right, compression is, and that, and when you, compression also, when you have to bring people in from the outside. So, you might have to bring a man in from the outside, pay him more, or right at the same level as what you're paying somebody who's been here 15 years. So, you know, but, but the sentiment that I got from each one of those meetings was that merit was important to them. I just throw that in because I was, you know, apparently recent.
You, question?
Thank you.
I mean, you know, this, you know, we're still in the discussion, we still have a vote on the floor, but we're in the discussion. Yeah.
I'll let you get that up.
No, well.
This has nothing to do with that.
Okay, alright, alright. All in favor of the, let me go back, 5% COLA, and the 1.2 up to 2.4 merit? All in favor, vote by raising their right hand.
Yes.
One, two, three. It's a unanimous vote? All, all opposed? Okay, hold on, Ms. Robson? Go, Ms. Robson had, has.
Ms. Parker, and.
Just commentary.
Anyway, in the budget, there's always an item, community thing. Will you explain what that money is for? I got, I kinda got an idea, but for the people, I think that this would help our board some. It's, it's under the general fund, base 12 out of 47. Right, reference, it says 12, but I don't know. Yeah. A lot of our non-town agencies partner with you during that time. I mean, they've been invited to partner, I know the education foundation was with you last year. That education foundation was out there with you. Val, Valerie, that's what I thought, I thought that that would, you do stuff like that, and it's ads and stuff. Where does the money come from, for ads and magazines?
Now, for the, for the Winterville magazine specifically, there's a line item that has $3,000 in it, and that's when we pay for the Winterville magazine. Anything that we've done, anything that warrants an advertisement, or could be deemed as an advertisement, we have several advertising line items in different departments that covers that. And it covers a whole gamut of advertising.
Because there was a group at the, at NCLM.
I can't see you, Ms.
It was a business at NCLM that did the magazines for free. They got their money from the advertising.
We, I, I think the calendar for police is done like that. I think there've been some, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but the calendars, or their advertisements on the calendars. And a lot of the costs for the calendars come from those advertising revenues. We did a video one time for the town that basically didn't cost us anything, was, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, but they sold ads to businesses in town, and they, that's how the company got their revenue. So, those kinds of things exist. I haven't checked into the actual companies that do magazines, but a lot of times that, when the newspaper does it, you know, you've got that defined relationship with those folks. Sometimes a company that you don't know, the experience the businesses have are sometimes good, and sometimes not that good. So, I'll just throw that out there.
I just want to. What you have shared with us tonight, that, you know, you have a team, I call it a team, that when everyone is recommended for a merit raise, that we look at it, and it has to be approved.
Whether it's a.
I like, if we can, if we can, if we can, finish, if what, probably, I mean, that will be probably needed. So that I can have a vision, I mean, of our employees actually being through the phone.
We can certainly provide feedback on that. But there's a team, whether an employee receives a merit, whether they receive disciplinary action, whether they're fired, whether they're hired, it's a team approach for all of those things. I think I'm following you, I'm not sure I am, but, again, the merit system is performance-based. Be glad to bring back totals, numbers, on the number of employees that received a merit raise. But it probably won't be any more specific than that, just so you know what to expect. Okay? Okay, good. Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Parker?
Angie.
Angie. I think, once after this budget, I think we had talked about the MAP study.
Yes, the classification pay study, and the, and the update.
Hope that we can get that completed later on.
Yes.
That would be something that this board would be able to see.
Yes.
Our employees.
Correct.
Because not only us, it's a lot of town.
Yes, absolutely. They may use different. Again, it won't.
I'm not, I'm not.
But let me be, let me be clear, that's not the person and the job related, that's job related. But I think a lot of people think that, so.
I'm just saying, it's a dumb town, so.
It, it'll let you know that our salaries are competitive, yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely. But I wanted to say, because there'll be some people maybe sitting at this table tonight, that think that that means that a classification pay study is about the individuals on the job, it's about the jobs themselves.
But it, but it could help with, you know, one of the big benefits of the pay study is like getting rid of that compression issue, and making sure we're competitive in the market, retaining a good employee.
The challenge is, a lot of times, it won't. We'll still have the compression issue, we'll have to take a look at, because it, it doesn't necessarily move people along the range. It deals with the beginning, and, but it lets us know whether our ranges are in order, and then we can try to take a look at moving people accordingly. But it definitely lets us know we're competitive, and those ranges will be as they should be.
Thank you. Can I get a?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I was trying to wait patiently, and. But I have two things. When the budget is being drafted, and now that we have settled on the property tax, and the budget is being drafted, I want to inquire, or to make sure, or to ask that via in the recreation fund, that we keep what was discussed in terms of the steps towards the process of the multipurpose center to be outlaid within that budget for visibility. And, or, that's an inquiry. If that can be placed in there, and if not, where would it be placed for visibility? Because out of sight, sometimes things get away from us, and I wanna keep on that, that's my first part. And my next part is, in terms of the increases for GFL, the increase in sewer, the increase in the property tax, will this be going into effect in July? And if so, how soon can we get notifications? will this be going into effect in July, and if so, how soon can we get notifications, uh, to the people of Winterville so that it won't be sudden? That was my two things.
Okay, so can I deal with the second first?
Yes.
I think that, uh, it is anticipated that all of those go into effect in July with the beginning of the budget year. So, now that I assume we have solidified the tax rate number, we can start drafting, and we hadn't discussed as a staff, how we'll get that information out, our normal ways, but we may do a separate mailing rather than a newsletter item, but to talk about these things and budgetary impact, so.
Yes.
Yes, I think the answer is ASAP to get to notifying folks. Second, on the multipurpose facility, or, or, excuse me, center, um, we had talked about creating a capital reserve fund, and Anthony and Jessica will do that.
Yeah, I mean, and you also believe, and I, if it's not, forgive me for not knowing the recreation budget, like the back of my hand, but there's notes in all of them, and we can document in those notes that those studies are in, being funded, and what they're for. So, it'll be documented in the notes in the, in that department's budget, um, normally like the blue, it'll be the blue section down here, so like contracted services or engineering, and then one of the notes will say, you know, site-specific design for multipurpose.
Thank you.
And then the, um, I don't know, some of that may be coming out of this year's budget, or is it all next year? So, I mean, some of it's already been funded, um, but while I have the mic, I need to bring, we've, we've talked about rates, and one thing we haven't, and I'm just going to float this tonight, but we'll bring in more specifics, um, Tuesday, about the electric rates. And as you may recall, um, when we went through the, um, bike on the natural gas prices, um, we had added the power cost adjustment to the electric rates, and at that time, you know, I made a recommendation, and Barbara Sutton was here at the time. But we, we made a recommendation to, you know, look at the rates and try to see if there's a way to minimize these impacts on citizens. So, when we have these drastic, uh, changes in weather, uh, whether it be in the summertime or in the winter, that, um, we are basically minimizing the impact so that they don't have very big deals during those periods of time. And this will especially help people who have homes that are, um, not insulated as well, or, or older homes. But what we'll do is, we'll look at our minimums, and then we'll look at what we're charging per kilowatt hour. So, the kilowatt hour, what, what we'll bring back to the council is a, a new rate structure that doesn't change the actual amount of revenue that we're bringing in, but does actually change how it affects the citizen. So, you'll have a, a higher minimum, but you'll have a lower AWH rate. So, when the meter's spinning, meter spinning, meter spinning, instead of it spiking up here, it's going to go down here. But, on the flip side, you don't have any usage where every city, every, every customer will pay more for the minimum. So, uh, we're roughly at, um, $12, and I think Brimble's at 21 for the minimum, but their kilowatt hour rate is much lower than ours. So, we've had, we hired a consultant engineer to look at these rates, um, and we'll bring back documentation on how these, this rate structure will still bring, is designed to still bring in the same amount of revenue, so it shouldn't, it should, it should be a benefit to all the employees, I mean, should be a benefit to all the customers, so that you don't have those big spikes in the winter and the summer, and still not, uh, be detrimental to the revenues that are let you from, but it, it should be an even wash.
And I did want to say, um, back to recreation and the multipurpose facility. We talked about, and even had a, a citizen inquire when we could start putting information out about the multipurpose center. And I think now, as we're starting to, these plans will come on board before too long, uh, Diane and staff, and we can all get together and start, uh, formulating how we can start to get information out there, with like a picture of the land and some information, we've talked about potentially maybe some type of celebratory thing for council and citizens. Yes, signage, absolutely, just to start to call attention to the fact that this is coming about, and it is a future, uh, plan of the town, so we should start to see some of those things. We will let you know specifically what we have in mind and what we'll be doing, and certainly, uh, any ideas that you all have, we would welcome as well. But we want to start advertising that, for lack of a better word, is also. I think you're going to see it as a separate capital reserve fund. Yep. Yes. The, the range I have in mind currently, of course, got to go crunch numbers, is in the 10 to $25,000 range. It, it doesn't have anything to do with that, it just has, I mean, it, it's going to come out of general fund revenue, so it's $10,000 to $25,000 more to the deficit we have to cover.
Have a motion on the floor to adjourn, Anna. Oh, recess, okay, uh, we will recess this meeting to next Tuesday, uh, what's that, the 20?
28th.
28th, May 28th at 6 o'clock.
At 6 o'clock, yes, and thank you all for agreeing to be available, um, and hopefully, there's no dinner that night, and hopefully, we won't be here very long.
Thank you.
Thank you.